Baltimore City Council, Ways and Means Committee. We're back for ordinance 24-0521, ordinance of estimates for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2025. Eric Costello, councilman from the 11th district chair of the committee, joined to my right, Mark Conway, councilman from the 4th district, Vice President Sharon Green-Milton, councilwoman from the 6th district, member of the committee, to my left, Councilwoman Dani McCray, 2nd district, member of the committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th district. We have representatives from Mayor's Office, Council President's office, and Nia Garrett to my immediate right. I said it right, did I? I did. We are here for Mayor's Office of Performance and Innovation. Director, take it away.
Oh, I'm sorry. Could you say that again? Oh, great. Thank you so much.
Let me say it again. Director, take it away.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everybody, for having us today. Excited to sit here as the interim director of OPI. If you don't know, I started my career as an intern in City Stat up on the 6th floor 19 years ago. So, it's been a long and circular road, but it's exciting to be home and use data to make Baltimore better. So, just lots of stories in this room, in 6th floor, and it's just, it's been a good career, and I'm happy to, excited to continue doing so with a fresh, new team. It's like a reboot for me, and I'm really enjoying it so far. So, I'll go through and start. So, basically, our mission is to use data and design to create sustainable change for the city of Baltimore. We have three main goals this year. The number one is to have the nine principal stats up and running. So, Councilman Conway, in the previous year, enacted legislation that came into effect, or was, I guess, signed in mid-January and comes into effect July 20th. So, we will be working to get all nine principal stats up and running during this next fiscal year. The second thing is a focus on improving resident satisfaction of the 3-1-1 system. If everybody knows, I'm, you know, like I said, I've been here for 19 years, and it's always a lot of times about that resident satisfaction, and what's the resident experience of the 3-1-1 system. And that's sort of all I did when I started, and I'm really excited that we're bringing that back and really focusing on it more. And a lot of it's day-to-day. It's never like, hey, let me wave a magic wand and fix 3-1-1. You have to work every day to get all the different SR types, and you have to get really deep into them. So, I'm excited that we're really working on that more. And then also have a much more robust fieldwork and inspection program. We have a full-time investigator. He was more part-time before, but now he's full-time out there every day, probably doing 15 to 20 a day. So, he's working hard. This is just the OPI current status. This is the performance portion. So, of course, we have a performance team lead, two performance analysts, City Stat Deputy Director with three analysts, Deputy Analytics Jason Howard to my right, as well as the investigator and two data fellows. And as we're working here, we're going to continue to work to work together more and more as a one unit, and thus will, and as we work more as a unit, we'll be able to fill in and using some of the other resources throughout the agency to make sure that we can get to all nine stats, plus the other stats that the agency, that the city administrator and deputy mayors want to work on. So, here's the two pieces here where I want to touch base on. So, of course, the number of agencies participating in City Stat meetings. So, as of right now, we have many multi-agency stat meetings. So, the real number of agencies participating in City Stat meetings is 23. The number of stat sessions that we have is 10 agencies, or 10 to 11 stats per month of all various different types. Sometimes we might miss a month on some of the ones, such as late payments, because we don't have as many topics to talk about. I think that's the long-term goal, to have some of these stats that are issue-based, to improve the issue, and then move on to other issues. So, we're doing quite a bit. And, you know, I do want to first, of course, thank the staff for, sometimes I'll run out with some crazy ideas, so I walk out of my office and say, "What do you guys think about this?" And then they're like, "That's crazy." And then I'm like, "Just think about it a day." And then they come back, and they're like, "We could kind of do that, but a little bit different." So, that's fun. And again, the number average of inspections per quarter, we put on here as a goal of FY25 target of 75 per quarter. I'm, Rashad's doing about, probably getting closer to 75 per week. So, that's maybe not 75 per week, probably 40 per week. So, 40 times, so we're probably going to be in the 300 to 400 per quarter. So, Rashad's out there every single day. We're querying the 3-1-1 system. We're looking for particular issues, and we're trying to follow up. Sometimes, you know, Rashad doesn't find anything, sometimes he does, but we're then bringing those inspections into the City Stat meetings, into 3-1-1 to kind of show, because a lot of times you can show data, but if there's no picture or richness behind it, it doesn't really mean as much, and it's hard to kind of grasp. I'll kick it over to Terrence. He is the Chief Innovation Officer for Baltimore to give at least the information about the I-Team structure and positioning.
All right. Good morning. So, as we know, we've had an innovation team since 2017. We threw Bloomberg Funding. However, yeah, so we had an innovation team since 2014, since 2017. This new funding allows us to reinvigorate the structure of the I-Team, tackling two of Baltimore's most aggressive issues, being housing vacancy, and then the other side of it is BPD recruitment and retention. And so, the team now is moving from four members to 10 members, 11 members. Starts with the Chief Innovation Officer, where I've come from Mobile, Alabama, for 10 years, 10 years of service in that field, but now in Baltimore, I learned to Baltimore as a Public Innovation Fellow with Johns Hopkins, and so, love the city of Baltimore, so I wanted to come in and help out. So, now I'm here, but where the team is filled out was with all the positions field, where we added a chief storyteller, because we know that Baltimore needed a really a better story around what was actually happening. There's really good work happening, there's really good things happening inside the communities and with our partners. However, that doesn't always get out, and no people, most of the time, don't have the access to that information. So, we hired a really good chief storyteller who's able to tell that story. Deputy Director, to make sure that we're tying both the sides together, and then on each side, we have a project manager, civic designer, data analyst, and project coordinators. And so, with those, we've done a really, really good job of bringing in really, really high-level people into the city, who are excited to bring their expertise, both internal and external, to the city. So, I'll pass it back over to Steve.
Thank you. This kind of gives a little bit of a look of the performance management processes in the city of Baltimore for the upcoming year. A couple of these meetings are not full stats. A lot of them can be using the four tenants of City Stat, but not necessarily have a full stat meeting where you use data to drive decision-making. So, of course, we have the Squeegee Collaborative, which is the CA's signature initiative, which was backed with by Ryan, Ryan, who was working for us. He, well, I won't give everybody's name for everything, but I'll go through Squeegee Collaborative, Youth Violence Stat is a full stat, Racks and Parks Stat is something we're working up for the, of course, the next year. As we come up, we already have some good start to data, of course, Police Stat, Fire Stat. We're also working on vacant detection, which won't be a stat. So, that's part of housing and working with other folks. Clean Stat, Sprint Stat, which is folded into Clean Stat. We've been working up opioid stat, so I know that that was a hot topic yesterday. We won't necessarily have exact information on when that will start, but we have been starting work on that. Also, return to weekly recycling, which was both the Tiger Team and folded into Clean Stat. Also, we started Permit Stat. I know that the city administrator mentioned that yesterday. Neighborhood Sub-Cabinet as well, has some data-driven decisions. Growth Stat, DOT Stat, of course, where you're working on, they have, actually have a lot of data to start with, so that will be exciting once we get that up and running. Tax Sale Analysis, we've actually come up with some work where we're able to now better analyze tax sale. That's due to Jason being real smart and putting data together. So, excited to, like, we got this cool data, and then we put it together, and then we were like, here's like 9,000 more questions. So, whenever it's like, yeah, and then you're like, ah, here's 9,000 more. So, we got a lot of work to do there, but it's exciting that we really have a good basis and kind of know where things stand, and so that's exciting. Also want to mention, this is by Matt Garbark's group, Project Stat. We also have Invoice Payments Stat, which we don't hold every single month, because at least in terms of what we've been looking at so far, the agencies through the purchasing system are paying. We have the Grants Work Group. We have Procurement Stat, which we've set up two dashboards that's really help out the agencies. We've got the Water Billing Work Group, and then we have Fleet Moderating, plus we'll be bringing on DGS Stat. So, the four stats that, to meet the legislation, that we'll be, you know, bringing out over the next couple of months, or next six to nine months, are opioid, which will be Health Department, DGS, Racks and Parks, and DOT. So, that will round out the agencies. Also want to mention that we're trying to really put together the usage of dashboards and automated data better, and not just any old automated data. We want the data to be useful for the folks in the agency, so the actual supervisors and superintendents. So, that's where we've focused a lot of the efforts on. So, the first tentative City Stat is Accurate and Timely Intelligence Shared by All. But if I give you data, then I share it with you, and it's not useful to you, you're just going to delete it in your inbox. So, that's sort of what we're trying to really think about as we move forwards. The city administrator mentioned the City Stat is focusing on customer satisfaction with our 3-1-1 surveys. I think that this was, again, another thing that we brought up. We got some data, and we really realized this is just bringing up more questions, which is exciting, and we're focusing on, you know, the SR types that were, you know, people just don't feel like we're doing a good job, or we're not doing our job. And that's where we're working on to say like, hey, let's make sure they know what this SR really means, or hey, is there something happening in the field? It's a lot of work, 3-1-1, and BSIT has been excellent partners. I'm excited about this. This is, you know, like I said before, this is what I live and breathe. I did mention the inspections before. We have an inspector. Everybody has to go out on a training day with an inspector, at least, minimum. So, the analysts also should be going out to see what's happening on the field in their particular things, but they always, you know, generally go out with Rashad, who's a really seasoned investigator, really doing an amazing job. Also want to touch base on the Data Fellows Program. So, Jason is also the Data Fellows Program Manager. I think we've had 18 Data Fellows over the last five years or so. Half of them still work for Baltimore City, other ones work at nonprofits. A lot of them are kind of early-career data folks, and they end up getting other jobs. So, sadly, so if you see the picture on the left, the guy on the left laughing, he just got a great job at Boston's Metro, not Boston, sorry, Chicago's version of Transit Stat. And Jeanette over there, she's now working for the Fire Department. So, it's a good program. It's really bringing the right type of people in. Just a lot of people staying in the city, good, young energy, give them an entree to city government, because it's really hard after you graduate college to get into city government. There's not really, usually need like, you know, two years of experience or something. It's difficult. So, this is getting the foot in the door of some smart, young folks. Also, something else that one of our Data Fellows is doing is working to improve Open Baltimore. So, I think, you know, that 3-1-1 has been a good partner, but she focused on finding to increase the reliability of the current data sets. And also, one of the highlights is we actually worked with Code for Baltimore. We had a meetup, and they helped us come up with a program that looks, that kind of contests the reliability automatically. So, when we see when things get broken links or updated, am I saying that right? Yep. So, that's really exciting, that we went out to the community, and they actually gave back to us pretty immediately, at least the coding community. Also, we have Agency Performance Plans, which we've been working on pretty diligently. City Administrator sits with every agency to go over these performance and data plans. I think this is exciting that it's up, and I'm really excited to see it as it continues, as we meld them, melds the work closer with BBMR and build a closer relationship, again, since we're all in City Hall again, working together. So, that's my next exciting piece, to bring that in. Of course, Clean Stat. Clean Stat's the classic of City Stat for many years. We've kind of taken the bounds of Clean Stat, a lot of stuff from Racks and Parks, and DOT is making its way into Clean Stat, but as the other stats open up, they'll, Clean Stat will be a little clearer, just because we have the people together in the room already with the data. So, that's why we've been really doing a lot with the 3-1-1 follow-up in the Clean Stat. Of course, another signature initiative of the CA is Service Sprints. So, we are the Service Sprints Tracker. Every Monday, we meet and put the data together. It's been pretty cool. I think it's fun that you kind of tell the employees, hey, your work is really important. We want you to like, work really hard and get a lot of this done, but we're focusing on you guys getting something. And then if they get their numbers, they get really excited. So, it's kind of fun. Also, the city administrator mentioned the callback, or call pickups at the Permit Center. So, this was one of the first things that came out of the Permit Sat process, a number of changes to the way that phones are answered at HCD, both technology and staffing, that have really improved that portion. Of course, Permit Stat is not just that. There's many other pieces that we're going to continue to work on. So, right now, we're kind of focusing on trying to help the Fire Department with some of their processes. Also, we're working on vacant detection. So, Jason was able to work with DPW and HCD to find some of the vacancies with the most water in them. We're going through the list pretty systematically so far. And again, I really want to thank DPW and HCD. We figured out, saving about $640,000 a year on this, and it's been a good, you know, we've used data, cross-referenced it, and gone. So, we're going to go down the list here to really focus. And this is separate and additional to the other efforts that HCD and DPW have been doing to shut down. But we're finding these very quickly, able to find the, Jason gets the data every month now. We're quickly finding which houses are springing leaks. So, it's going to take a while to get through all of them, but we're quickly finding them. It's pretty cool. Also, just give Terrence a couple more seconds.
Director, can you wrap this up?
Yep, sure.
About under two minutes?
Yep.
Actually, make it one, please.
Sure. All right. We can, if you have any questions for Terrence, he can jump in with the slides. Nope. Well, yeah, all right, God, he's good. He can do it verbally. No, no, we got it. Question time. You guys are up.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Director. Appreciate all the great work you guys are doing and look forward to seeing more of it. I think, I want to start off with just following up on where we are with the implementation of the City Stat Program and the bill that we passed last year. 180 days after the enactment, excuse me, 180 days after the enactment of that bill will be July 15th. And so, I want to know where we are with the implementation of that bill, and if we have enough resources to carry it out, especially, I noticed we have a lot of stats that we're trying to execute. I just want to make sure that we are appropriately staffing the office to actually carry all this stuff out.
So, I think, so we have a couple vacancies. I have three major vacancies. Two of them, I have people signed on the dotted line to come in June. So, if I can get all three vacancies up, and then we're going to all have to pull a little more, so some of the folks on some of the other teams will have to take on a stat or two, but I'm pretty confident that by January, we'll have everything up for, to meet the principal agencies, without having to stop all of the other stats that we have ongoing.
Got it. The other question I had was the broad structure of the office, that being OPI. You know, with all that we're doing, I'm really excited to see the various efforts that we're putting forward around innovation, innovation teams, City Stat, and so on and so forth. Have you guys thought much about the structure of that office and making sure that it is sort of designed to succeed with data maintenance, performance management, City Stat, and so on and so forth?
Yeah, I think that, you know, Terrence is the Chief Innovation Officer and has kind of really taken that as, you know, we're across the hall from each other. So, he's really taken on that piece of the puzzle. I'm working very diligently on the performance aspects and kind of bringing the performance analysts of various types together and closer. So, people are, it's really, it was a little bit more of, hey, here's the performance management analysts, here's the City Stat analysts, and here's the data fellows. And everybody was kind of working together, but especially now that we're back in the office, we're all really working together. So, people will be like, cross-teams, help each other out, and even, you know, work on particular City Stat pieces or other pieces there. So, I'd say, yes, it's going to become a little bit more flat management structure on that side, a lot more just cross-collaboration, just because we, A, see each other, and B, we have to work together on these things. So, I'd say, yes, we have, it's going to be flatter as we move forwards.
Okay. And just sort of thought, as we continue to work toward the implementation of the nine primary stats, one of the things I sort of thought about was in our performance measures, and I know these aren't reported in the budget book, but if this is what you guys are going to continue to track yourself by, you have two here. One is the number of agencies participating in City Stat meetings. Our target is 23, excuse me, yes, our fiscal year 25 target is 23. Last year's target was six. Good to see that move in that direction. And then the other one is the average number of inspections per quarter, which is fine, great. I would love to see some metric denoting the number of primary stats that we hold, noting that that is, that is the one thing that we are sort of mandated to do in the office, and I just want to make sure that we are keeping track of that, whether it's the number of stats held, or the percentage of the, you know, of the nine per month. Whatever, you guys can figure it out. You guys are the.
We can track that for you, and nine times 12. We're going to do it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think my question would be centered around the vacancies. With the implementation of new stats, obviously, one that, that a lot of us are particularly interested in, which would be the opioid stat, and just making sure that we have the correct amount of people who would be able to see these through. Like, I don't want to see something assigned to, an additional stat assigned to, you know, people because we have vacancies. Can you just speak about the challenges specifically for your agency in attracting talent and also maybe retaining talent? I get that, obviously, the competitiveness of, say, the data fellow that we probably would have loved to keep, who went to Boston. And I'm happy that we're at a 50% rate as well, with folks who are staying within city government when they come through this program. But can you, let me get the question, can you just speak about the challenges that you're facing with filling these vacancies?
Yeah, I'd say City Stat is never meant to be a place where somebody comes to work and works for 20, 25 years. It's really a place where you're meant to kind of get into city government and then hopefully find your place in or somewhere else into city government. So, that's my goal, that it's not as much a career, it's more of a career starter, either as a data fellow moving up to City Stat, or as a City Stat analyst, to get into an agency and bring that data-driven decision-making into the agencies. So, that's my goal of it. If you look, so if you look at that, you know, you want the driven people that want to get to the next step, that want the next job. I'd say that we need to plan for that and plan to have people come in frequently. So, that's what we've been working on, really kind of making sure that people can easily pick things up. But I've actually been surprised recently at the quality of people that I've been able to get recently. So, we have a pretty competitive salary. Definitely way more than I've made when I started, like, a lot. So, it's definitely, you want the people to be there. I feel like we're getting good people, and I do think that there's a transition through COVID, through back-to-work. There, you know, there were a couple people that didn't necessarily want to come back to work in person, or they had other thoughts. This is really not just a data analyst. This, you're a data analyst, and you're working on operations. So, I think, you know, you come in, you work for two years, and then hopefully you get another job within city government. That's my goal, and we have actually had, I actually had three or four really qualified candidates for two spots. I'm hoping to get another one in. So, people have been actually very interested in coming to City Stat, and I'm hoping that we can really have more to sell over the next year, as people start seeing how impactful the work is being.
On average, how many data fellows do you bring in a year? Is it like one to two, or can you just give me that estimate?
Yeah, it's, there's two, there's usually, there's two data fellows that we have, and the two data fellows usually work here for a year or two, a year and a half. A lot of them end up becoming City Stat analysts or go to other agencies. And actually, some nonprofits have been poaching, a lot of local nonprofits have been poaching a lot of our data fellows as well. So, it's, we have two data fellow positions, and they rotate through about a year, year and a half each.
Thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, the vacancy detection stat that you have is based, I think, on something, on one of my bills, where we asked that all the, there'd be water shut-offs of houses that, where there's vacant. And I'm so glad that it's really taken off way better than I thought it would, because there was the tiered approach that I think that DPW was going to do, but then someone must have said, wait a second, we can actually save money this way. What amazing concept. And so, I wondered, you know, how, and it's also under public safety and not equitable development, which doesn't, I don't know where, how you classify all of these things, so you can answer that as well. But are you following that tiered approach that, that DPW had reported that they are doing? So, what they had decided was that houses that had been vacant for a long, long time to really, you know, shut those off, because obviously, if they're relatively newer vacancies, there's a better chance that they're going to get rehabbed sooner, right? I know. I didn't come up with that logic, they did. So, I'm wondering kind of if that's how you're doing it, or if there's a different mode of methodality that you're using.
So, they're still continuing with that. We kind of found data. We worked with Water Bureau through, actually, Water, we got a lot of water data from Water Billing Stat, which started up. We've only had two or three meetings, but we got the data, and we just kind of grabbed it and cross-referenced it, because we have really smart data people. And so, we were like, hey, guys. And then we had Rashad go out. We found either a lot of water in the basements, or Rashad found a lot of squatters. So, that's why we put it under the public safety, because there's like, 20% of them have squatters as well. So, it's pretty quickly finding squatters. But we worked with DHCD and DPW and said, let's make sure nobody's in these. A couple of them were also locations that had been rehabbed and had, did not get the final use and occupancy.
Amazing.
So, this is like a lot of different data points coming together, a lot of partnership and walking through with DHCD, DPW, but I'd say it's a real, you know, we were looking at it from an 80/20 rule, because we were able to work together, to bring data together, to get the data, to put it together in a nice way, because like I said, I got Jason, super-smart data guy, smarter than I've ever been on data. So, I'm excited. Do you want to jump in with anything there?
This initiative touches a lot of things. So, it costs savings, because we're losing a lot of water. It's affecting our infrastructure just because.
Obviously, yeah.
Basements are filling with water, but then the public, public safety aspect, because, yes, there are, there are people that are occupying these same homes that are having leaks, filling the basement, and it's a risk to human health. So, it touches a lot of different pillars, and there are a lot of ways to. We're, we're agencies identifying the top 20 worst candidates. I mean, they're using thousands of gallons of water a month. Either that's because it's a busted pipe, or the water, and we're following those through. So, those are actively being shut off, and I hope that we can expand in the future.
Want to thank the, both Directors of DPW and HCD for. Want to thank the both directors of DPW and HCD for. Sometimes, I'll come up with a crazy idea, Jason will come up with a crazy idea. Sometimes we go out and it's not anything, but sometimes it is. And this was definitely something to follow up on, and the agencies were really supportive of us finding that data.
This is great, thank you. I was the founding director of BNIA, so I know that once you go down one point, you're going to find some other stuff, and then there's more questions, and then there's other things, and it's hard to kind of focus. And so it sounds like you've found a focus that is also going to touch on a lot of different issues. So I really appreciate that, so that's great. My second part is around the tax sale analysis. I had provided some data, and I think that you all got that, where we're, if you look at the houses that have been removed, you can just tell which ones are vacant. And so you're, I guess, looking at, because some of it is around the accuracy of the data that's already there, right? And then some of, in figuring out how to make that better, and then also just continuing to check the. A little bit more on the tax sale analysis. Based on some of that work or some other things with that?
So this was sort of another place where we were able to cross-reference a lot of data sources. So they, you know, we started out with the tax sale list from the finance department and just great people over there to work with. So we brought them over, we talked about it. Jason was able to cross-reference a lot of housing data on it so that we could kind of see where different problems were, both owner occupied from the state as well as vacancy data. So, you know, like you said, we had a lot of questions. This analysis was done kind of a couple of weeks before tax sale, so I think there's tons more questions about that, about which ones are actually vacant, which ones are actually owner occupied or not. I mean, it's, I don't know exactly where it's all going to go, but we're not, we're especially excited to see what comes through the tax sale, what doesn't, and then move from there. So I think that there's a lot more thought besides the initial thing of like, hey, let's make sure that we don't kick any families out. Because of course, we, the mayor removed, how many houses, Jason? We forgot if it had, yeah, moved the houses that were owner occupied and under $250,000 away. So we were able to do that part of the analysis, but there are follow-on analyses. We're happy to, we're going to be like pulling some of yours to see if some of those ideas match your thoughts. So it's definitely going to be, our plan is to work on it over the next year so that we can see what we find. It's going to be interesting.
In fact, in fact, right before this meeting, OPI's data folks met with housing data folks to see what we can do during the off-season to correct databases and make sure all the databases align. So when tax season comes around, we have more reliable data to feed these analyses.
And that's going to be important as we move forward through tax sale reform as well, because it's, part of what we're doing is eliminating the third-party sale, and, you know, we're going to have to have accurate data as to who actually needs help and who is, you know, not, and a lot of other factors there. So I think that's going to be super helpful data. I would encourage, I don't know if this is part of your, your team, but there are a lot of people that have worked on this issue for a really long time. And so hoping that you might be interested in talking with people who have helped folks get out of tax sale, and we see different things each year. Like this year, we found that there was this mid-year assessment crisis where people were getting mid-year assessments and, you know, nobody knew why, and it never went to the mortgage company, so a bunch of people ended up in tax sale. And so, you know, it's, it's just very interesting what we've been finding, and I think the data is going to be really important. So I would just encourage, if we're going to move down this road, to really talk to some of the practitioners that have been doing this where, because we've been finding some really interesting things. And so, and we try to report it, you know, but if we're reporting it to you, that's really important to know. So thank you. I have more questions, but I'll yield. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I want to circle back to the question about structure and resources for the office. I did a, just a quick count of the number of stats that we have listed here, and if this is the wrong way to look at it, please let me know. I guess it would depend on how often these stats meet, like the burden for the respective analysts. But we know 24 stats here that currently exist. And just looking at the legislation we passed, we'd be considering adding additional four to five stats, depending on how you define some of the stats, if they would qualify as being one of those primary agency stats. So I, you know, I'm curious how we think about resolving the sort of burden and need on the analysts. Technology has come a long way since I was an analyst, and so I'm sure a lot of this stuff can be automated. Are we perhaps even thinking about consolidating or putting some of these stats under an agency umbrella in order to make it a more manageable burden? How are we, knowing that we have to launch this in July under this new budget, how do we make sure that we can actually carry out that nine stat mandate?
Yeah, I'll say that we're 24, that's different stat or stat-like programs. Some of them are not full stats. So I counted the other day, 11 monthly stats, plus fire, plus police, plus clean. So that's about 14 current a month. We are going to maybe do some, bring some stats together as they become less of a hot topic, that they can be, the meetings could be melded, or even if the data is strong, brought back to an agency. So it's, I don't want, I don't want to think, people to think that a lot of these stats are going to be forever stats. Sometimes a stat is an issue, and when the issue isn't as hot, you can move on and focus on other things. So I'm confident that with about, we'll be up at about 17. With the staff working a couple. Getting a couple of the extra folks in to jump in on particular stats with automation, I'm pretty confident we're going to get to the nine every month and without any major reduction in service. But there will be some, some consolidations of some of the stats as we go.
Okay, and that's with the current resources, under the current budget and all?
Yep, correct.
Got it. The other question, I was excited to see news about the chief storyteller, that hire for, for OPI. I'm really curious about what it'll do, what is the purpose? And anything more you can provide about the purpose of that role?
So perfect. So the purpose of the chief storyteller is that we, we are, the role of the innovation team is to reinvigorate these innovation approaches. And sometimes we, we don't understand what that really means. We use the word innovation and change. But what is the work that we're doing directly inside of the government with both the external and internal stakeholders to ensure that those, that the actions that we're taking within government are actually hitting the targets of the residents and the stakeholders? And so we wanted to ensure that that chief storyteller, that while we are doing great work in Baltimore, that that story is being told from the perspective of the people that are doing the work and the people that are receiving the services. And so we wanted to make sure that, we do have a great, we have a great communication team here in the city, but as it relates to the work that is being done inside of. Resolve some of the most pressing issues, that there's. Element, and that we were able to create this fear of missing out, that people want to become a part of this thing that we're doing. And so the innovation team is built on stakeholder engagement and resident engagement and creating trustworthy processes, and that we can't do that if people don't understand what we're doing and how we're doing it. And so we wanted those stories to be told from the, from the perspectives of the practitioners, from the perspective of the stakeholders that we're working with inside of the community so that they understand what is happening and how they connect.
And this, is the work of the chief storyteller to tell a story to city agencies so that they can also see how these innovations can help them? Or is it geared toward projecting otherwise to the public? I mean, what are we trying to accomplish here?
Yeah, so both internally and externally. We realize that, realize that in some ways we kind of get stuck in our silos. And so we need to be, we need to be able to tell the great story of organizations that are working together and the results that come from that. But also, as we're telling that story to each other, the impact that is having on the intended target audience. So that we're being able to build trust internally, and so that it's both focused, it's both internally and externally focused. Because honestly, we're trying to build this, these trustworthy processes and with these fair, caring, and just systems. In order to do that, we have to be able to tell the story of what's actually happening and how that's being conveyed, so we can own our own narratives.
Got it. So what, what would be something we might expect to see from that role in the first year?
So first year, you can expect to see, because you expect to see a myriad of things, right? So some events, you can expect to see really good, really good posts that we have, really good social media posts, but also really, really interesting blog stories about how these things are happening. And so we're able to support the actual work of like now versus people hear what we're doing in stats. People hear about what we're doing in the, in the community. You're able to see the people and, and hear the voices of the actual residents. So it might end up being a podcast. We're very open to what that might end up being, but what the intended, the intended point of that is that you now know exactly what an innovation team is and how the city is working together to solve these problems versus hearing someone else tell you about what is happening inside of the city from their perspective.
Okay, and is there an example of like another, like storyteller role in another city or that we can, that'll help me wrap my head around?
Yeah, so we, so there was, there was one inside of the city of Detroit. This one is kind of different from how we're, how we're focusing it, because that one was kind of telling the story of the city as a broad, as a broad entity. And this one is, this is the work that is happening in vacant and abandoned housing. This is Ms. Gertrude who has been experiencing this issue. This is why this is urgent. This is how these programs are being created, and these are the people that are creating. The story from the beginning, versus just hearing it, hearing a press release, and then seeing something at the end. You get a chance to follow the story and the process all the way through. And so then that helps us to drive more traffic in, more, to engage more with the community so that they understand exactly what's going on and how, what role they should play within these resources that are being created with them in mind and with them, cooperated with them in the space.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just quickly going back to the 3-1-1 work that you all are doing. Are you working on the Spanish 3-1-1? We still don't have a Spanish 3-1-1 app. I know that Director Carter has taken on that role, and we're hoping for the June or July date. But I was wondering if that's also part of what your work is?
I mean, we support 3-1-1, but they're definitely taking the lead with MEMA on that. So we're not focusing on that at the moment. So that's 3-1-1.
So you're just working on, you're just working on the inner workings of SR comes in, it goes to X agency. You want to follow to make sure that X agency does what X agency is supposed to do and then come back, you know? That's what you're working on?
That is our focus.
Got it.
But we do know, we do work with 3-1-1 and have frequent meetings about things, especially. 3-1-1 will talk more about some of their data and data transfer changes and other things that they're doing, not, that will also be shared. Then we are much, we are informed on everything they're doing, and we've worked with them on that. But I'm pretty proud of what 3-1-1 is doing as well. So they've, they're doing a lot of things that are really just hard work in, in that little piece. So they're taking a piece of that. But a lot of times, we're the follow-up piece to really see what's happening on the street is the thing we're saying smart. But it takes everybody, so I want to make sure that we call 3-1-1 a true partner in all this.
Thank you. Can you let me know a little bit more about the innovation team for, for housing vacancy? Like, what is the role? What is, what is the outcome? What are you trying to do? What's your outcomes? Is it mostly just focused on agency performance to do the work? Or are you looking at, what is it that's actually going to move the needle on this issue?
Yeah, so thank you. So we are, if you can imagine, the innovation team working within DHCD is like a force multiplier. So they're the leader, but we're able to go in, do the things that they may not have the bandwidth to do. So for us, it is about going out and doing the research and understanding from the different, make sure that we're taking a very nuanced approach. So we're reimagining the way that we have viewed vacancy in the past, providing them with this boost of energy. So now that they have this new project coordinator, a new data scientist. So our data scientist is a former neuroscientist from Harvard. So that also gives us a very different perspective, a different view. We have now a new project coordinator who's also bilingual, speaks Spanish, she's a researcher. And so if you can imagine adding all of that new capacity to the actual, to the actual, to actual DHCD, gives us the ability to go into these different neighborhoods to understand how is this neighborhood different from this neighborhood? To not, so they're ensuring that we're not taking a one-size-fits-all approach. But on the other side of it is that we're not just creating things in a vacuum as it relates to our housing vacancy issue, that we're going out and we're actually understanding the stakeholders from the world that they live in, the approaches that they see, that they need us to take as it relates to how they participate and how they view the world. That we're also creating systems that are fair, that, that means that the information that is going out goes out in their language and the way that they understand the world, that we're engaging them in ways that they best fit working with the city. But then on the other side of it is that whatever we were doing before, to understand the baseline, how is that actually impacting the bottom line? And then, or is that being created with the people who are experiencing the problem closest? And so that's, that's kind of where we are now. We've just started with the police side. We've just, we've been hiring the whole time. And so now we're meeting with the staff and we're going into the departments and we're working with Alice all the way down to the, to the inspectors to understand exactly what they needed at those different levels. And from that, the, from that, the deliverables start to flow from that world. But as innovation team, our job is not to come in with an idea, it's to go out and talk to the people who are experiencing the problems and generate the ideas from what they wanted and provide those recommendations and resources for prototyping those solutions.
So if I'm understanding correctly, how many people are on the team?
11.
11. So, so you've got some data folks, some program management folks, some experts in the field that are going to go into DHCD and kind of figure out all the systems that are happening now, what the interaction is with the communities in which we work, and then look to improve those systems? Or are you simply there to just add capacity?
No, 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 to actually improve the systems.
Uh huh.
So if, if we go out, the thing that we, we are intending to do this, is it actually hitting that intended goal and target? What are, what are the stakeholders expecting from our actual interaction? Right now, we know that they are, the ACD, they are very good at what they do, but they may not have the full bandwidth and capacity to go actually out to those different stakeholders and understand that this stakeholder group wants this, this stakeholder groups want this and want this. And so as we start to think about when we're funding, we're taking this, we're on a $3 billion funding strategy, right? $3 billion funding roadmap that we're working on. Where does that go and how does that impact? Are we actually, is it just about building houses? Or is it about rebuilding community and restoring vibrancy? If it's about rebuilding community and restoring vibrancy, what does that look like in East Baltimore? What does that look like in West Baltimore? What does that look like in Coppin Heights? What does that look like in the care communities? What do they need to actually feel like they are a part of this process? And that we're not.
Well, okay, I appreciate that, except that, you know, planners do that all the time. People who are doing, who are community development organizations do the work all the time. And I, and maybe you do need to establish that baseline with the, with the new people that are there to really talk about with the stakeholders what they want. I'm sure you're going to start dehearing to say, I've said this four times and I don't want to hear it again, I don't want to say it again. You all should know. I know that's going to happen in one of my districts, in one of my neighborhoods. You all should know because we've been talking about this all the time. And, you know, because people already know what they want, and it's a part of your processing, I guess. But the issue is, you know, we need to have processes and tools in place that are going to help them get to that goal.
So, and I 100% agree with that. And so in my experience, right, so we do run into those, I've been doing this for 10 years. We run into those issues where people are fatigued with being asked what they want, right? The other side of that is it's not just us asking what they want. We, we are already asking internally what has been done, what is working. But we're also out in the community listening and observing. So we say we're doing this, but is that actually hitting the ground in the way that it should be hitting the ground? We've had, so in that way, we've not had, we've not had as many, as much pushback as one would think. People are kind of excited to kind of talk about, because the processes are not just us sitting down talking about it, it's us there observing, us there spending the time with them in their daily life. We spend some time in the office, but a lot of our time is spent out in the community. Since being, since here in the first three months, we've increased our total engagement number by 283%. So that is because we're out there, we're moving around, we're understanding, and we're documenting in the way that shows them exactly what's happening, and they can, they follow the process. You gave us this information, this is how we've documented, this is where it went to, and this is what we're working on now. So that it's not just them being brought to a. them being brought to a decision-making table, but now them being brought to the agenda-setting table, where they can now add their voices to the pieces that will ultimately form the decisions that they have, that they have to choose from. So you're right, the systems, it gives us a purview into the systems that we currently have, and how are those systems working? Do we need this? Do we need that? Are we doing too much of this? Are we doing too little of this? For these people, not just for the entire Baltimore, but for this group and this group alone. And I think that's, that different approach. It takes a little bit of trust-building, because as you can imagine, when you go into some neighborhoods where they've experienced lots of disinvestment, or they've experienced, they haven't had the greatest level of
Engagement, yeah.
Engagement with the community, right?
Right.
With the city. It's our job to make sure that we are becoming that front door, that we change that mindset, that we change that operation. We can only do that by actually understanding, understanding and answering the questions about the government's ability, its humanity, and its integrity, right? Can we do what we say we're going to do? We're listening to understanding, trying to figure out, can we actually do what the community wants us to do with the resources that we have? Can we do that without causing harm to any of the community members, right, in any of the groups? And what does harm mean in each of these, in each of these districts, each of these neighborhoods? And then the last part is, can we do that without having massive oversights? We have to keep calling us over and over again. Are those systems delivering on any of those elements? And if they are, then we're in a good space. If not, then we have lots of work to do.
So, okay, so I, I appreciate that. You want to do the listening, you want to understand how it's all working. You want to go from the 3-1-1 report for a certain vacant house that hasn't, you know, been taken care of forever, and why this has occurred. You want to go, I'm imagining, correct me if I'm wrong, that you're really sort of looking at that. So Ms. Jones has a house next to her that has been vacant for a long time, that's leaking in her basement. She's been calling 3-1-1, coming, I'm just making this up, but this is a real scenario. I understand, I understand. I understand. I got it. And so then there's, you know, she's been dealing with this for a long time, and DHCD hasn't taken any action. Part of it is because we don't own the property, right? So we have to take possession of it. I mean, this is a really complicated process, that I'm just trying to understand where the innovation team fits in on understanding those processes, and, and then what improvements we're going to see, so that Ms. Jones, before she passes, can actually see some action on that property.
Yep. Thank you for that question. And I will allow Terrence to answer. But the way that you saw, when we looked at our performance management system, we saw all of the stats. Imagine that the innovation team is a team that is only focused on one particular stat, which is housing, right? So Bloomberg came in, and they said, you have a significant problem with vacant housing. We want to give you a resource to focus on vacant housing and only vacant housing. You have an issue with police recruitment. We want to give you a team of people that will only focus on police recruitment in your city. And so that means that they are going deep, they are unpacking the system, they are looking at data, they are then identifying innovations. So I always talk about how we use AI technology to detect collapsed roofs, right? That came because we pulled together a focused team of people and said, okay, what is happening at vacant houses that are causing all of these fires, for example? And so that would be a byproduct of the work that the innovation team does, where they say, hey, there's this thing that's happening that's driving fires in vacant houses. Here's a technology that we could use to detect these collapsed roofs faster, right? So just to give you a broad, broad overview of how to think about the innovation team, is they're, they're, they're spending all of their time specifically on DHCD, and then specifically on police recruitment.
Yep. And then just briefly, and then the partners that come in to help us, right? So we can't be all just about dollars coming from the government, but what are the other partners that we need to bring in to help us resolve those issues? Partners that help the community feel like they are a part of this process, and that they aren't left out? Happy to share.
Well, so, and I appreciate that. I mean, I think that one of the things that will, you'll see, is that we actually need more tools. And I will say that during the campaign, the mayor kept saying, we don't need more tools. So I don't know how this is going to work, if you're going to come up with more tools, and he's saying, we don't need any more tools. And tools can be defined broadly. It doesn't necessarily need to be, you know, but I'm just saying, like, you're going to go through all of this work, which is extremely important, and I'm super glad it's happening. I'm very excited about it. But I want to make sure that there's going to be an outcome that's going to be, I understand, that where there's going to be a, and this is my last piece, where there's going to end up being a, an outcome that is welcomed by not just the stakeholders in the mayor's office, but, you know, it's, it's actually going to be, because this is really amazing work.
Councilman, you've got to ask me right off the bat. Sorry. We've got to just focus on.
I understand.
We got, well, we got to focus on questions here. Are, are you good? Do you have any other questions?
I just want to see if the CAO wanted to answer that question.
She's good, she's good. Councilman Conway.
I'll be brief. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Let me just jump in here. We'll get some time to brief you on the work of the innovation team, and get your feedback on some of the outcomes you might want to see. I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Appreciate it. Conway.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two very quick questions. We talked a little bit yesterday during, you're hearing CA Leach about, that's the 3-1-1 issue, the close means close issue. I was curious, who's sort of leading the effort so far as agencies under you? Is it going to be City Stat, Moit, or someone else? Or, excuse me, Office of Performance Innovation, MOIT? Who's?
Yep. Thank you for the question. So OPI has been convening the agencies, and the main partner agency, of course, is going to be BSIT. And so BSIT has, BSIT is, they're using their tools and assets and their staff to, to do kind of the, the work. But we also have Jason Howard, who's, Dr. Jason Howard, who's our data scientist, and Steve and his team. So OPI is bringing together BSIT to dive deep on the issue. But BSIT also has folks working on it, too.
Okay. I appreciate that. And hopefully, as we continue to work on it through the year, if we need to circle back and just share information, make sure we do that for my team. And then the last question to you, Madam CAO, is what is our timeline to permanently fill the director position?
So I'm not talking about personnel issues at any hearings, but I'm happy to talk to you about it offline.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. We are in recess.